I'd like to call the media to order. Rule call.
Mrs. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Conquest?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher? Mr. Karcheski?
Here.
Mr. Skorzynski?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Sartorius?
Here. We do have a quorum. You'll stand and join me at the clerk's allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I need a motion? Start here. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make that motion that we approved the agenda for this evening.
There's a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion's nay. Motion carried. District announcements.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening to those watching at home. Just a few announcements. Last month, Mrs. Thompson suggested that we talk about the open positions that we have in the district in district announcements. That might keep us here till 8 o'clock if we were to go through all of the openings we have right now. So I would say that we are always on the look for nonlicensed support staff. We are always on the lookout for new drivers, new bus aides, lunchroom monitors, and we have a whole slew of teaching positions that are open via for their in next year is we're already starting to get the staffing things going for next year. So you can follow us on Facebook, and we have our all of our employment opportunities listed on our website as well. The other announcement I'd like to start out by making is to we recently had a school board election, and the apparent winners of the April 6th election for us were Mr. Ed Cronin, Mr. Jim Sartorius, Mr. Stephen Blount, and Mr. Adam Schoenberg. So congratulations to you all. Mr. Blount and Mr. Schoenberg are joining us tonight in the audience to follow along what we do here at the board. Once we get the official certification from Grundy County, which we expect within the next week, we have scheduled a special board meeting on April 27th to reorganize the board. And that's when new officers will be elected, and we will establish the new calendar of meetings for the upcoming school year. So that is all I have for district announcements tonight.
Okay. Recognition of outgoing board members.
So also, as a result of that election, we have three of our current members that will be leaving the board. This is their last official meeting with votes. So we would like to take time to honor the service of Vicky Allen, Renee Thompson, and Andy Karcheski. I think we will start with Mrs. Vicky Allen, a two-term board member, former employee in the district, and longtime Manuka face. So thank you so much for all of your efforts, all of your conversations, all of your discussion, your dialogue. You've pushed for some great initiatives in this district. You've been a part of many great discussions, many collective bargaining discussions. So this district is a better place for you having served here. So thank you so much for your efforts. Next, we will go with Mrs. Renee Thompson, who is concluding her first term on the board. She came in the middle of our referendums and was a tireless voice for us. And many of the suggestions that you brought up at these board meetings, we started to incorporate, like the district announcements we just had a moment ago. And you've been an avid voice in a lot of the operational discussions that we have had, just most recently suggesting like the expanding the air purification even beyond what we were trying to recommend. And there've been many, many great ideas that have come from your discussions. So thank you so much for your times. Thank you for your service. And finally, Mr. Andy Karcheski. He first joined the board when a previous board member moved out of the district on a two-year term. And then at the last election, he went to complete that two-year term. He has been a wonderful addition to this board. I remember in the interview process, you basically just came across as someone that just wanted to help. And it's been wonderful having your calming voice and engaging you in dialogues. And again, the district is better for you having served time here. Thank you so much, sir. And if any other board member or would have a comment to say goodbye to these folks, otherwise, we will continue on with our meeting.
Thank you to all. Great job. Glad to have had you aboard. Appreciate the time. Appreciate the time and effort that you put into the board. I think you've made this board a better board for your talents that you've loaned to us. So I thank you very much, all of you.
I would like to thank you also. Each one of you brought in a different perspective to the board and made the board a better, a better board. And the community needs to know, being on the board's a difficult job. And these three individuals work very hard. So thank you very much.
I'll jump onto all three of you. When I started coming to board meetings, were supportive of me and supported me through election process and how navigate all of that, how to navigate the balance between talking to the community and being in a board meeting and visiting schools and things like that. So I really appreciate the years of expertise you had to kind of pass on to new board members. I think that's invaluable to keep our board moving in a forward and positive professional direction. So thank you very much.
All right.
Just one more thing. Any final comments from any of our outgoing board members?
I'd just like to thank the community for giving us this opportunity and for voting for us years ago when they made the choice. As they said, it wasn't a very easy task to do. We did put in a lot of time and effort, but it was also very rewarding for us to represent our constituents and, of course, our teachers, taxpayers, and our students as well. So it was very, it was very good experience to work with all of you. And I want to just say thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on. Students of the Month. Who do we get up first?
Is someone from MIS going to introduce? I believe we have videos again to share with the community. Mrs. Jackie Herrick, Assistant Principal.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Herrick, and I'm one of the Assistant Principals of Manuka Intermediate School. We would like to recognize this evening three outstanding students from sixth grade. We have Carly Rousa from the Six Blue, Malia Hickinbottom from the Six Green Team, and Trent Reynolds from Six Red. We would also like to thank our Secretary, Mrs. Peterick, and our teachers for contributing to the video.
Excited to announce the Six Blue Student of the Month, Carly R. Carly is a student that enjoys coming to school. It's obvious in the way that she is as a student. She has work of the highest quality. When it comes to participating in class, she always is raising her hand and asking questions or answering to questions. A lot of times in class, I'll have to say, I need to call on somebody else other than Carly. And Carly just sits there with her hand up, smiling, ready to answer if you need her. She's always kind to her teachers and to her classmates. Everyone enjoys being around her and interacting with her. She is active in sports outside of school. So she not only maintains excellence in her academics, but also in participating in sports. She's an absolute pleasure to be around. We love having her on the Six Blue and a part of our Six Blue family at MIS. Thank you to her parents for raising such a wonderful student that we enjoy having in our classes so much. Congratulations, Carly, from your Six Blue teacher.
The sixth-grade Green Team is proud to announce Malaya as the Student of the Month for April. Malaya models great classroom participation on a daily basis. Malaya is respectful and kind towards peers and MIS staff at all times. She displays responsible behavior throughout school day and is an exceptional role model for peers. Additionally, Malaya is prepared to be a part of her own learning. Overall, Malaya exhibits an enthusiasm for learning and consistently completes high-quality academic work. For these reasons, the sixth-grade Green Team congratulates Malaya for being selected as the Student of the Month for April. Congratulations, Malaya.
The sixth-grade Red Team is pleased to announce Trent as our Student of the Month. Trent is a tremendously hard-working student who consistently goes beyond in whatever he takes on, managing his time well between school and various extracurricular activities because of his passions and perseverance to participate in each successfully. He also takes his studies very seriously, yet always in a way that is focused on the desire to learn more and make himself better for it rather than simply trying to receive a strong grade. Simply put, Trent is an outstanding student in person with a positive, encouraging attitude who exemplifies the three Rs in Manuka Intermediate School. He is a wonderful, empathetic role model for his peers, consistently has a positive outlook, is inquisitive and insightful in and out of class, and is always ready to help others when the opportunity arises. It is a privilege to have such a devoted student on our team who continuously makes this learning experience and that of his classmates meaningful and enjoyable. And I know Trent will continue to challenge himself in as many ways as possible, thrive when given the chance to advance his education, and ultimately succeed in each of these endeavors. Therefore, the sixth-grade Red Team is proud to have such an exceptional student as Trent. Congratulations, Trent.
Congrats, Trent.
Congratulations to all of those wonderful Manuka Intermediate students. Do we have a representative from the junior high to introduce those? Mr. Finkelstein, Assistant Principal.
Good evening. First of all, thank you to the Board of Education again for taking the time to recognize the young individuals from Manuka Junior High that are receiving this month's Student of the Month. We have two seventh-grade and two eighth-grade students from our ARROWs Awards. And this month, we would like to recognize from the seventh-grade Arts Department, Melanie Vargas; seventh-grade Math Department, Sophia Anistopoulos; and then from eighth grade, from the math department, we have a young man, Nico Hurtado; and eighth-grade Spanish, Lucas Thompson.
Melanie is very involved in class while she ensures the rest of her classmates are getting the most out of classes. If a student or a teacher needs a hand, Melanie is right there. She is quick to think innovatively whenever the opportunity arises. But she is methodical and careful when appropriate. Perhaps, however, Melanie shines the most when she takes an academic risk. While other students wait to see what the answer is, Melanie jumps right into the mix. First, congratulations, Melanie, on winning April Student of the Month.
Good evening to the Board of Education, staff, students, and families of 201. We're here to congratulate our daughter, Sophie Anistopoulos, on being recognized as Student of the Month. Way to go, Sof. We are so proud of you.
Your focus and drive did not go unnoticed during this past school year. There have been so many improvements in your ability to overcome and adapt. They're nothing short of excellent. The ability to navigate through the impact that are put in your educational pathway is a true testament to your character and drive. You continue to amaze us with your balance of school, encore dance, and all the extracurricular activities that you are involved in.
Remember to keep your feet on the ground and keep reaching for the stars. Congratulations to all the students who are being recognized.
Nicholas Sebastian Hurtado. My prince, I'm so proud of you, Nico. I know it's been a challenging year, but you did it, baby. Congrats. Love you.
Hey, just wanted to say congratulations to Nicholas Hurtado, my boy, for getting the ARROW. Great job, buddy. Keep up the good work, okay? You're awesome. Keep it up.
Hi, this is Mike Renee Thompson. Just wanted to congratulate Lucas on Student of the Month, and I hope he keeps doing a good job.
Lucas, we hope that you continue with your success. I know it's been a hard year with e-learning, and you persevered and done a great job. But most of all, we are proud that you are a kind human being. So congratulations and much continued success to you.
Lucas, we're very proud of you for working hard during this challenging school year. Keep up the good work, and congratulations on being Student of the Month.
Hey, buddy, I know it was a tough one. I'm glad you got through it. Congrats on the great achievement you had for this year.
Again, congratulations to all of those outstanding students of Manuka Junior High School and Manuka Intermediate. I think we all look forward to the days where we can have the kids back in these meetings and get to meet them face to face. But in the meantime, you're doing a wonderful job. So keep up the great work, everyone.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the Students of the Month. That's a great job. And the Manuka Lions Club for putting in businesses together a little prize for them. Congratulations. Now we can move on to the consent agenda. If I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Real quick, let's just make it clear. We did not get any public comments submitted tonight. So we can move to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye.
Mrs. Allen? Mr. Karcheski?
Aye.
Mr. Skorzynski?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye. Motion's carried. Okay. Action items, Summer 2021 Life Safety Work?
Mr. Shirley, you want to come up and present the architect's recommendation?
Good evening. So we got our bids in, and our architect has recommended a winning bidder of LRC Group, which is also known as Tower General Contractors. My understanding is Tower has been, you know, on more than one project in this district and has done an excellent job. The winning bid was $528,000. We're recommending two additional alternative bids that would include door replacement and wall sealing. The grand total combined would be $590,000. Work would begin as soon as school is out and hopefully finish at least three weeks before school's to start. Any questions I can answer on that?
Just to be clear, life safety projects are budgeted out of our Life Safety Fund, which has its own dedicated funding stream. So this does not affect the operating budget. It comes entirely out of life safety.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate all these projects being finished before school begins in August?
So hoping that three weeks would be our goal. So we've talked about that, and that seems to be the plan. They've done a preliminary review, and if things go well, we can even get it done sooner. It just depends on a couple of things. So three weeks is that kind of drop-dead date.
And do they have all the materials necessary already? I know that it seems like everything that we go to do these days is held up due to COVID.
You're 100% right. And you definitely cannot answer that at this point. They think they have that. And of course, when we go to match brick or we go to find an I-beam or we go to find something that is probably, you know, not one of the called-out items, that's usually when things get, you know, difficult. I've been assured both by the architects and Tower that everything that's needed to complete this can be here except for the doors. So that alternative bid that says door replacement at Junior High, that will be very close. That will be the very last thing that we do. And assuming that gets ordered, you know, the next week, week and a half, it should make it.
And have you asked them how much longer they've had to extend their timeframe due to these interruptions from the pandemic?
It, you know, it just varies dramatically. Things that require a lot of steel seem to be an issue. And, you know, we don't have a lot of technology on this particular one, so that seems to be in our favor. A lot of the work that's listed is unfortunately mostly labor. So that's in our favor as well. But again, the doors are probably our only difficult situation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that door at the Junior High? Is that the main door?
No, those are the winged fire doors. They were called out by the state Fire Marshal, and they all have to be taken down and replaced. The inner workings of all of them have stopped. And basically, they don't even need each other anymore because of the shifting of the building over the 26 years. And so those are by far the most difficult thing. They're approximately 12 feet tall. They're just, they're just not a typical thing. They have to be custom-built, and it'll be a challenge.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Transportation?
Oh, we need a vote on that. I believe we need a motion and a second, correct? Yeah.
Any motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Summer 2021 Life Safety Work bid as presented.
There's a second.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye.
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 Mrs. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Karcheski?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, transportation, garage, drainage bids?
Yeah, if the board recalls, back in December, we were approached by the village about needing to do some drainage work on the site east of our transportation facility. They were originally one large site. And when we, when we purchased our half of the site to build the transportation facility, we were still responsible for the overland water flow for the, one of the really big, severe-type storms. So we partnered with MCHS 111, the high school district, for all of the costs associated with the transportation facility. We finally got this bid out this month. Last Thursday, we opened the bids. The winning bid came from Winninger for $88,901. And this would involve a little bit of work on the property east of us. It will involve saw cutting the entrance of our transportation driveway so that they can get drainage pipes going over to the outlet that's on the other side of our property. And we split this 50-50, so the net cost to us will be $44,450-ish. But we need to approve the bids, so.
I'll make a motion to approve this bid as presented if there are no further questions.
There's a second.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Karcheski?
Aye.
Mrs. Allen?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye.
Mr. Skorzynski?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye. Motion carried. Waiver of the 2020, 2021 school fees?
Sure. A new action item that we have brought for your consideration tonight is reflective of just the hardships that this year, this school year, has put on everyone, our community, our schools, our teachers, our students, our staff. One of the things that we have decided to bring for you is acknowledging that there have been financial hardships on the community. At the same time, some of our operating expenses were not as high as we normally would have budgeted. So Mrs. Robinson has prepared an action item for you to waive the 2020, 2021 school fees. And I'll let her describe it.
Good. Yeah. Yes, as Dr. Mon said, we took a look at where our budget is projected to end up. We, of course, have two more months, but we believe that we will see about a million-dollar operating surplus. And because some of our families have been negatively impacted, we are asking that the board credit any family that has paid their 2021 school fee. So basically, we could go into Power School and wipe out the school fee from last year. And then anyone who has paid that money would be put in, it's called the wallet. And then it would sit there until we apply the 2122 school fee. And then it would, it would then go against that next-year school fee. We are also asking that any of our eighth-grade families that have paid their school fee, that we would go ahead and refund that amount minus the $25 graduation fee, which is used to purchase the caps and gowns and diplomas, which, of course, will be purchased. So the recommendation is to waive the 2021 school fee, credit the current students' accounts, and refund the eighth graders. The credits would be around $262,000. And then we would refund approximately $48,000. We would also give families of eighth graders the option of passing that credit instead of a refund down to a younger sibling.
Any questions for Mrs. Robinson over this action item?
Hey, I need a motion to approve the waiver of the fees.
I would like to make the motion that we refund the fees to our families for this year. I think it's a fantastic idea.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Mr. Skorzynski?
Aye.
Mrs. Allen?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye.
Mr. Karcheski?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you for that. I think that's a wonderful gesture to the community.
Okay. Preliminary 2021 staffing improvements.
So normally, this is a February agenda item. But with the trials and tribulations COVID has provided us, we are a few months later than normal. Our preliminary staff Our preliminary staffing ideas and improvements for next year, we tried to relay them into the strategic plan and some of the goals that we have, the long-range strategic goals. So, we are in a timeframe where we've had so many families that have decided to homeschool or possibly enroll in private during this COVID crisis to change their, the education model that they were able to provide, that we, our enrollments are just not what we would normally expect. So, we don't have a lot of additions of classroom staff based on enrollment, though we do kind of expect that those students are going to return and matriculate back into the system. So, this is the preliminary staffing and as this board's seen for many years, we often will have to address class size issues as we get further down the school registration timeline. So, tonight, in order to help move us towards long-range strategic goal number one, to demonstrate continuous improvement in student growth and achievement, we are considering a .5 teacher at the junior high. There's currently a .5. This would be expanding that person to a 1.0 and I believe this would be in science and social studies and would really allow them to not get into mid-30s in class sizes in those areas based on the students that are currently in the district. We, last February, we kind of brought forth the instructional coaches and we were ready to go with the job description and then COVID hit, so we just kind of put the brakes on that. We are bringing that back this year. However, the model is slightly different. We are not going to hire those as full release next year. Instead, we are going to identify those staff and spend a year developing and training those teachers and the coaching models so that when we do bring them in and actually ask them to start working with staff, that they've got a well-grounded foundation in the coaching model. Additionally, we need 1.0 special education teacher at Walnut Trails due to case load size limits. And then one of the areas that we are hoping to address, the idea of learning loss in addition to other academic supports, is in our band program because I think as our intermediate and our junior high and then any parent that has a child in band knows, that program has just been impacted as much as any. They really weren't able to play instruments in front of an instructor for the first three quarters of the year, pretty much. So, we are proposing using some of our federal funds to address learning loss, to add two band teachers, one each at Manuka Intermediate and one at the junior high school. They can help with both whole group instruction as well as possibly be able to give some smaller, more individualized lessons during some of those whole group to help make up for the lesson time and the practice time that we weren't able to provide this year. And I know Mr. Nysler and Ms. Tady are ecstatic that we're bringing this proposal to you because they have been lobbying for additional support for quite a while. So, long-range strategic goal number two, cultivate a safe, engaging, authentic learning environment that promotes student confidence and growth. The area that we would like to bring forth is an emerging bilingual coordinator and for this one, I think I'll ask Dr. Ruland to describe a little bit about what this role would look like.
Essentially, this person's responsibility would be to coordinate our programs for ESL students, emerging bilingual students, and organizing that across the district. We've had a rather steady growth in that area and with that becomes more requirements that we are asked to complete for the state, but then also having somebody in charge of the district coordination would provide a better instructional environment for those students. So, this is a position that would be specialized with ESL and would be able to do that and provide that for our district.
Towards long-range strategic goal number three, support a positive and productive working environment in which student-focused staff are engaged, collaborative, innovative and accountable. We are bringing forth a director of human resources position, so it would be expanding our administrative team by one here. This administrator would be charged with directing, monitoring and assessing all functions of the human resource office, including coordinating all employee evaluations, ensuring compliance with state and federal employment laws and managing labor relations as well. We've spoken for many years that, you know, adding someone to manage and coordinate the HR functions of this district has been a deficit for us for a little while, so we're excited to bring this forth to you. Long-range strategic goal number four, strengthen family and community engagement, communication and collaboration to support student success. The emerging bilingual coordinator that Dr. Ruland just spoke of would have a very large parent, you know, communication and coordination effort, so we believe we will be improving our effort for that strategic goal with that position. And finally, long-range strategic goal number five, ensure community trust through effective and efficient operations and stewardship of facility and financial resources. We are recommending two different positions to improve our district here. The first is a night supervisor in buildings and grounds. This would not just be reassigning and existing, this would be creating a new position. We have many nighttime custodians that come in after the students are gone or right as they're leaving and we really rely on our director and our assistant director to kind of cycle back through to provide supervision during that time. And again, that's a deficit in our model that we'd like to correct with this. We'd like to have a managerial staff, you know, on-site while these custodians and if, even if we get back to the age of where people can use our facilities after hours, having another administrative employee, you know, on-site that can help coordinate those things. Finally, a district technician, expanding the technology staff of Mr. Sousa's department. We currently have, in addition to Mr. Sousa, there are only two district technology staff members in addition to the six building-based technology staff. This would be expanding that by one to 3.0 and Mr. Sousa, can you give a brief overview of what you would be looking this district technician to do? He has to leave the AV table and make his way to the podium? The district technician would be charged with managing audio/video at board meetings.
Yeah, I think I'm on live chat, we'll see. Yeah, so the idea here is how do we provide better support to our teachers or students and to the buildings, especially when we have higher difficulty problems, more problems coming in, different use cases. Obviously, we've expanded the use of technology a lot with going, you know, well, we were, we went to 5-8 one-to-one, but we only let 6 through 8 go home and then we went, okay, how about K through 8 one-to-one and go home? So, we have definitely added to the technology, you know, doubling our devices that we are maintaining or trying to maintain. But the big benefit here is to provide kind of like that level-two technical support, onsite technical support. So, when there's a problem, let's say at the junior high and the building technician is having difficulty with it and we need another pair of eyes on it, in front of it, we can actually, you know, another person drive over there and help out. Besides that, the next step of this position would be to go over to assist both Afrem, our network manager, and Pam, our assist manager, doing parts of their jobs so that I can, we can kind of pivot their focus to hire more valued projects for the district for hopefully everyone's gain. So, it's kind of a two-pronged attack with one position. It would be kind of, you know, I imagine numerous techs would be applying for it in-house and go from there. So, any questions?
Well, I guess I'll summarize. So, you know, and we've previewed this with the board prior to this, so I'm happy to take any questions, but we believe that these are going to be wonderful additions to our workforce and able to move us towards closer to our mission and strategic goals. So, we'd be happy to field any questions.
First, I think I must not have received an email with the job descriptions and the salary prior to the meeting. Was that sent out?
It's listed in administrative content in board docs there.
Okay. I see now, but I thought that you had said in an email that we were going to get that the next day.
I put it into board docs and so that's where it was.
Okay. So, by all means, and maybe I'm wrong, but being one of the largest, if not the largest employer in Grundy County, we do need an HR director. We've come across several things that we've encountered over the last four years that I've made mention that that's very important to us. Plus, as a second language, as the diversity presentation was last month, we have such a large Hispanic population right now. In Anza, we don't have many teachers that speak that language or look the same as our students, so I think that this could be a very good benefit to our students. I also think that it will help to gain their community's trust, which is something that we've always tried to foster. One of the questions I had when it comes to our nighttime custodian is we, and I'm sure that this is because this would be an administrative position versus, a salary position versus an hourly position, but how does that affect what we did with bargaining last year as far as snow days and how they'd come in just to do trash, et cetera? Is this person going to be on that same type of a structure or are they in a different structure?
We would consider this as an entry-level administrative position in the Buildings and Grounds Department, though it would be salaried, not part of the bargaining unit. And they would be able to direct and possibly even evaluate the performance of the nighttime staff.
Okay. And last but not least, we all probably think that Erin needs additional help, especially with what's happened this year, so I'm in favor of all of this. I don't know about anybody else, but it's just my opinion.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Jim.
I was just wondering, ask anybody else?
Okay. I just had one clarification question. When we're using the federal funds, how long, so how does that work? How long do we have to spend it and how does that work when we use it for a position? Are we able to cover the salary for a calendar year, a school year? Is there an end date to that or is it just based on how you utilize the money?
I'm going to ask Mary Robinson to come back to the podium just in case I state anything here that needs to be corrected, but the first round of federal funds is already done. SR2, we are kind of finalizing our grant and that'll be part of the May board meeting where we're going to bring the board kind of our recommendations for what we do with SR2. The third most recent round of federal funding, I cannot remember the acronym for it right now. It's not SR3, that's some slightly different acronym, but it's another, you know, large portion of money. We have until the end of 2024 to expend those funds. So, any position that we are currently trying to use federal funds to do, we would at least be able to fund that for a few years before we would have to decide if we incorporate that into the operating budget, the non-grant funds, or if we were to change anything. Did I get anything wrong? She's shaking her head for those at home.
Okay. So, I need a motion to approve the...
We didn't bring this as an, this was more of a discussion and info to get your feedback on what we'd like to post. The action item for the board is when you hire the employees.
So, next month.
I have a couple more questions, sorry to do that. So, we are looking at internal candidates for these positions first?
So, whenever we post positions, we post them internally for a few days before they go externally. So, any internal candidate is, that's qualified is welcome to apply. It doesn't mean that we will automatically hire an internal candidate. We will evaluate external as well.
So, you were just talking about the coaching positions that you said that you were going to first because I think it would be wise to look at our teams first and really evaluate them before, kind of come with a plan of that first. As we know, we have some very good candidates within and even if they haven't applied for them, I think that because our talent pool is so diverse and even our tenured candidates, I think it's a good idea for our administration to reach out to those people and tell them, it may not be something you realize that you're qualified for, but we think you would be the ideal fit for before we even post these positions because we know that we need. I mean, I can think of someone off the top of my head, obviously, who would fill one of these positions very, very well. So, just as a suggestion, I think that that would be great. My second...
If I can follow up on that real quick. It's honestly quite rare when you hire an external instructional coach, especially when you're teaching the program, because these people have to have such a good rapport with the teachers and trust. So, I would see it highly likely that internal candidates would have a vast edge on getting these positions. And again, we've been talking about this, the coaches for like over a year now, so I would be surprised if our building leaders haven't already, you know, kind of got their eye and/or have had some conversations to see what interest might be there as well.
I can confirm that our building leaders have had those conversations because there are certain individuals that have certainly expressed interest, but even those who have not, that have been excellent in that role without the formal title, have also been addressed and asked to show some interest if that was the avenue they want to go down. So, yes, absolutely, we have some fantastic teachers that have been trying to do this role without formally doing it for many years and it would be great to be able to recognize them officially and bring them aboard.
Yeah, there's some leaders who don't know that they're leaders and they just do it on their own, so that's what I was trying to get at. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other? Summer school updates?
I'm going to go ahead and ask Mrs. Jerry and I think Mr. Finkelstein to come on up. Yeah, there he is. It's hard to miss him. As we brought forward to the board our plans, I did want to make sure that on a monthly basis, we brought back some updates and I was happy to hear some of the numbers that are coming out, so I'm going to ask our team over here who've been putting in their, with their second shift work in this role to kind of give us an update with how this program is starting to shape up for the summer.
Good evening again. So, as Dr. Ruland was saying, Mr. Jerry and I have been working on sending out the interest survey. Mr. Jerry put that together, we sent that out and just closed that yesterday. We have about 400 students that are signed up for the summer school program this current summer. The way we have that split, based on the enrollment we have, would be K through 4 with Mr. Jerry running out of Manuka Elementary School and then 5 through 8 at the campus, running out of Junior High with myself. About 100 students campus, 5 through 8, just shy of 300 students enrolled K through 4 at Manuka Elementary. As far as next steps in the process, we have gotten the interest from the staff. We are just now closing the enrollment for the students, so the time would be for us to evaluate what the needs are going to be for the staffing and start to reach out to those staff members who have expressed their interest to begin staffing the summer program, as well as looking into following up about the pursuit of additional administrators for the summer program based on the numbers that we have enrolled today. Furthermore, we have a transportation meeting set up for this week to meet with the transportation department about potential busing for the summer, trying to figure out what would that would look like and what logistics we can make happen in the summer for the eligible students that would be, you know, again, eligible for transportation.
Then, there's really only one other step. Once we get transportation figured out and what that would look like for people that qualify for transportation, like whether it would be school-based as it has been in the past, or if we would maybe look at some neighborhoods that might be able to be eligible for bus service. Then I think the next step after that would be to confirm with the parents that have shown interest on the interest survey and ask that they formally sign up on Power School so that we have all that information, including busing information in Power School. So, those are our next major steps for getting it rolling.
And to clarify for everybody at home, this program is at no cost and if we're able to provide transportation, again, that will be at no cost as well. We'll still work out those logistics, so it's important to follow through and give us that information if you are going to seek transportation. We'll do our best that we can. Just to give you some history on the numbers of this summer school program, just about 400 students. In prior years, we have run a dive-in to summer program at the elementary and some remedial type coursework that happens at the junior high. And generally speaking, we run about 100 to 120 students, so this is about four times what we would have in a normal year, which is a very large increase, so we're happy about that. And we've also extended this for four weeks, which is essentially doubling the time that our dive-in program at the elementary would run and we still anticipate doing a jump program in the fall as we've normally done for the past several years.
Sounds like a great program. Where will we actually locate these classes?
So, the K through 4 would run out of Manuka Elementary School and then the 5 through 8 classrooms would run out of Manuka Junior High School, working with Mr. Searle to stay out of the way as much as we can.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions we can answer? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
All right. Extended school day... All right. Extended school day update?
Yeah. So each month, we've just kind of given you a few updates on the latest developments as we've tried to get back to full days of school. And as you know, last week, we were, we extended our school day to almost full days to allow for some of the prep time that we needed to fit in with the block schedules. And it was so rewarding to see the kids enjoying lunch and sailing and talking with their peers in the cafeterias. I got to see, I think, a kindergarten lunch at at least two or three of the elementaries, and those kids just, you know, absolutely lighting up with the fact that they get to have lunch at school. Most of them still needed help getting the bags opened. When we, I think that was at Ochsable, we had a lot of bag work going on there. But just so nice and so rewarding. And I think the board can see in the school reports that they submitted, it's generally going well. You know, fine arts are happy to be able to get back in and do their thing, even if it doesn't look quite the same and normal. But the one thing that we are seeing is, yes, we've got crowded buses, and we have some crowded classrooms, and so we do have some more quarantine-type situations than we were hoping for. I think we're up to 226 students in quarantine. We have no staff members out right now. Last week, we had 129 students in quarantine. So the numbers have climbed a little bit. And I think we're seeing that in many of the regional schools as well. I know a lot of schools have seen the, not necessarily positive cases, but the kids that are affected via outside sports groups or just from being around kids in school, the quarantines are going up. So I, again, we plead and we beg with all of our families to please cooperate with the health mitigation strategies. It is not fun to quarantine. And when we, we did not want to have to send kids home on that first day that we finally got back to full days. But we are all doing our part to make this year work. And I know we have some frustrated families, and I'm sure we have some frustrated students that don't get to do with their peers. But if your child is showing a symptom, you have to keep them home. Because I think in one day, we knocked out about 70 kids at the junior high, Mr. Finkelkid, Mr. Finkelkid, Finkelstein. Wow, I don't know where that one came from. There are some Finkelkids in the family, I'm sure, but yeah. But yeah, we had like 69 of our students, I think, between MIS and the junior high on that first day that had to quarantine because a positive case was on our bus. So we also, we might have to start taking a harder line that when we find that someone made a bad decision and sent a child that they knew to be symptomatic, it might be time to revert that family to remote learning, because we don't want to knock out 100 kids a week, just because, you know, some people decided to, you know, send a child that might have had a little bit more than just a cough or something. So please, everyone, please do your part. We are all trying to get through this year. It's been great to see all the kids back. It's been great to see them enjoying their fine arts and seeing all of their peers, not just half of their peers, and then being able to converse in that non-instructional time of lunch. It's fantastic. And the schools have done such a great job. I know, like, watching the campus and the elementaries, they're running the garbage cans up and down the lunch aisles, and kids are tossing bags in left and right. It's wonderful. And I think the junior high feel like peanut vendors at a ballgame when they're, you know, taking their lunch carts up and down the wings or something. It's a really good system. So we don't plan on having to do it past this year, but we appreciate the help that everybody has pitched in to get us to this point. And please do your part in helping us get through the end of the year.
Now that we've started with in-person learning, what percentage of students are taking advantage of it? In the elementaries and then the intermediate and junior high?
I'd have to look up the exact table.
About the approximate numbers.
Sure. I think from the elementary school, Jones still has the highest percent of remote learners at 20. The rest of the elementary schools are in the mid to almost low teens, I think, of remote learners. The junior high and intermediate is a little bit higher in the 20s. I don't think, nobody's at 30, are they? Yeah. It's the mid 20s, 25 range for remote learners.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question or possible suggestion? If we, it's been a while since we have kind of discussed the symptoms and how to watch for things and what protocol to do when you do see a symptom besides call an absent. I know I've heard from a lot of families this week with allergies starting. You know, I had a kid with strep throat this week, and it's hard to make that call when the symptoms have changed regularly throughout this time of what we're screening on. So I almost wonder if it would benefit to have a reminder, a district-wide reminder from our health staff. The nurses have been amazing, I know, answering questions and calling and, you know, helping families sort through these things. But I know, as a parent, it's overwhelming to make those decisions when a kid's sneezing in the morning or something. So I think that might help a little bit, just some of the feedback I've been getting this week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Diversity and inclusion update?
So I'd like to invite Ms. McCarron to come address us. If you recall from our last meeting, the commitment that Ms. McCarron led and the commitment that our whole administrative team, and I believe at the time, our Board of Education stood behind, was to advance our progress with the topic of diversity and inclusion. And Ms. McCarron has been leading that charge, not only for the junior high, but really for the district. So I am happy to come back and give us a little update of where we are in our progress and kind of what our next steps would look like.
Thank you. As we said last month, we said we were gonna kind of work together to keep you guys updated and informed, kind of where we're at with things. Over the last month, we've been working on kind of several strands of this, knowing that each strategic planning goal is kind of embedded in some of this diversity and equity and inclusion work. We've also been keeping goal number five, kind of being fiscally responsible with this. So we started looking at different companies and consultants that we could work with. We started with about nine. There was automatically three that just didn't have what we felt we needed. We narrowed it down to kind of six, looked at those, got the information, got costing us the kind of approach of what the program is. And we have all that information for you guys, if you want to take some time to look at it. But there's basically, there's, of the six, there was three of them that we felt like would be a pretty good fit. One of them was, the cost just wasn't conducive to us and probably what we need. So there's three choices. We chose, number two was kind of where we, our recommendation would be to the board. What we're looking at is something to kind of help us look through all of these strategic planning goals through the lens of diversity, of equity, and inclusion. So we looked at administrative academies that have those things. We talked, Dr. Ruhl helped me get in contact with some people from ISBE to look at some things. And then just word of mouth, we have districts nearby that do have some equity offices, so we reached out to them, got some data for us to be able to kind of work off of. So in terms of that, we've kind of got an idea of where we want to go the next year with consultants and how that setup would play out. The ones that we're looking at kind of have some data retreat days to kind of look and talk data and look at stuff, and then meetings throughout the year. In addition to that, we are looking at some SIP stuff. I was able to get in contact with PDA, and they have some supports that they can offer us that they should be able to cover the charge and cost of for that. I'm also going to be looking at the IEA for some of their training and education that they have. Also, we are in contact with a business school down in South Florida that has diversity certificates that we're kind of working towards and just, just learning and getting better about the things that we've identified as hurdles for some of our students and maybe some of our staff members that we can look to provide. So we're doing that. Our SIP team is also doing an amazing job working with some of our students. We've got an I AM, we ARE approach that we're using with our kids. So we can identify and celebrate their individual uniqueness, but also celebrate as a Menucha Junior High School family. So we're looking to do that this month. And then we've got some fun kind of respect awareness, fun dress days that we've got scheduled for our students as well. So that kind of gives you an idea of the different avenues we're looking. In addition to that, we are finalizing our parent committee. We've got a couple more parents that we have to reach out to and hear from. But in doing so, we're gonna also work and see what days work best for their schedules, so we can get as many of those parents involved in the meetings. And we'll be looking to keep them updated at least quarterly throughout this process. This is kind of an idea of where we're at.
So as you can see, we've been doing quite a bit internally, in-house, of what we can do. But this is an area that I think I firmly support, the idea of bringing in a consultant who is not part of our Menucha family, in order to give us that outside view and really go through that without the bias that we may have, being part of the district, at least to start off that program. So this is an area I definitely would support. I would anticipate that we'll have some in for a action item for the board with potentially a contract or an agreement with one of these agencies that we've been working with.
You guys have any questions?
No, but I think your new board members will be great advocates to this, not being part of the district at this level prior. They're going to have a different lens to look through and maybe help with some of that as well. So I'm really looking forward to see what this brings you.
Good point.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Curriculum resource?
Yeah, as we talked about our long-term planning, I wanted to bring back an update to the board about where we are with that. If you recall, what we've talked about as we've tried to get work back to normal with our students coming back and trying to move forward in the area of improvement, ELA and math is still an area that we're looking for resources. We were looking to supplement and complement our current ELA curriculum with additional resources. And last week, we had to push back a meeting to last week with the change of when we started with full-time or mostly full-time enrollment with students. We met last, late last week and reviewed the resources that they had narrowed it down to. Both resources that it came down to, that they're looking forward to supplement, are fantastic as far as meeting the quality of ed reports. So we had our teams of teachers review each of those, plus that didn't make the cut, so we eliminated that one pretty quickly. They used a technique through EQUIP rubric to evaluate those. After that meeting, I reviewed what their recommendations were, and looked at the feedback that they had collected, not only from themselves as curriculum developers, but also from their peers within their content or grade level. And for grades two through five, we were able to, I'm able and confident to present the direction that we're going, which is going to be with Great Minds, Witten Wisdom for grades two through five. It's, again, scored high marks in the ed reports and the EQUIP evaluation. And then in the areas of our current curriculum, we looked at the alignment to our current curriculum, the support and supplement that it would provide, the integration of the social studies skills that we've been working towards, and ultimately, the science standards that we will also embed. And then the final decision factors really came down to a couple areas. It was the alignment to our current curriculum, how the implementation would go with our teachers, the instructional methodologies that each of the resources brought. Cost, of course, was a factor in there as well. And then the diverse and multicultural perspectives, along with the support that each program brought for teachers with PD. And I'm confident that next board meeting, I'll be able to bring you a recommendation for grades two through five for additional resources through Witten Wisdom. I intend for kindergarten and second grade, we're meeting again shortly to review where we are with reading, and then also phonics instruction. So if we're making any changes there, I'll bring that, an update, or possibly a recommendation for additional or changes to that. Grade six, seventh, and eighth grade ELA are continuing to meet, so I would anticipate that would be in May as well. And then we're also looking at our math work. I know April 30th, there's quite a bit of the math evaluation happening there. So I'll be able to bring you an update with, hopefully in June or possibly sooner in May, if we are able to do that, a recommendation on where we are with a pilot of that for next year. So we're catching back up with the work that we need to do. COVID kind of derailed us there for a while, but I think we're getting there. We just have to strategically plan our implementation and how quickly we will be able to go, given all the things that have happened, and not overburden and drive our teachers crazy with implementation. So. And at that point, I would entertain any questions about those areas. Otherwise, I have some other updates that we'll get into with administrative reports.
Okay. Administrative reports?
I will just let you keep the floor, Dr. Ruhl.
Okay. Just a couple others with the, in the area of curriculum instruction and assessment, one being assessment. So as we've talked before, a couple meetings ago, the changes that happened at ISB level with our Illinois Assessment of Readiness and our access testing. I would like to let the board know that Illinois was awarded, their application was awarded for a waiver, but that waiver did not remove the responsibility for assessing students, but it did remove some of the accountability measures. Specifically, it removed our requirement for the 95% participation rate, and also that summative designation for districts and schools that comes from the result of those assessments. So that was waived, but we still are required to administer these assessments to our students. Along with that, I wanted to give an update to the board about how we're assessing our remote students. There will be, well, some of you have received a letter from me previous about this, but we will also be sending an update specifically to our remote learners about process. But what we will be doing is, we will be offering on the days that we're administering the IAR assessment for our remote learners to attend school for that day. It would look to be that it would be for a full day if they're gonna take advantage of transportation, that they could attend that day, participate in the assessment, and then they could revert back to remote when the assessments are completed. So that is the option that we are, we are going to be able to provide to our families. I would also assume that many of our families who have remained remote have done so because of health reasons, and therefore, we will not force parents to bring children into school for IAR testing if they are remaining remote for those reasons. So they'll be invited, but really, the parents will make a decision on whether their students should attend on that day in person for the IAR testing. That, again, during that day, if they were not to attend school during the day of IAR testing, then that day, there would be possibly some independent work, but there would not be that synchronous instruction happening during that day, because it would be a day of remote. So we would mark students as absent, but we would not mark them as unexcused during that time, because I think we all understand where we are currently in this environment with COVID and where we are with remote and in-person instruction. Yes, ma'am?
And how much of a lead time are you gonna provide the parents of remote learning so that they can make that decision?
So I believe we are prepared, and I'm looking at Erin, because we're doing this together as far as the signup goes. I believe this week, we'll be getting that information out there. But the timing for when the assessments will be happening are going to be in late May. So I would anticipate we're looking at more than two weeks' notice of where that is. And it'll be building-specific, too. So the building teams are still finalizing their schedules as to when, like, second grade, or I shouldn't say second grade, when third grade is planning to do their IAR for reading, or when they're doing it for math. So that will be the schedule that the parent would have to know in order to determine which day they would be sending their child to school. But what we really will be doing shortly here this week is determining whether or not parents wish to send their child to school, regardless of what day it would be. So if they are intending to do it, we need to know, because we're gonna have to make plans with our transportation as well. But if parents are opting out to tell us that, no, this is not a safe environment for my particular child, so that they would be opting out, then that's us with planning as well. And with that, it's really the biggest, the big administrative report that I have update. So with that, I can stop.
Any of our other district administrators have anything to update the board? Dr. Staub, anything? Mr. Searle? Nope. Mrs. Robinson and Mr. Souza? All good? Look at that. The gift the outgoing board members is brief administrative reports. So I will conclude my administrative report simply by saying, again, it has been a pleasure to work with the three of you. Thank you for your collaboration and partnership, and we wish you all the best. And we have no closed session this evening.
No. Anyone for board topics?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll take that one. Is there a second?
It has to be Mrs. Allen or Mr. Karcheski. And then I think we need a third, just to make sure they're all on the record on their final vote.
Second.
I third.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All of us stay here.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for watching.